Good morning. The Douglas County Board of Commissioners special call meeting of August the twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-four will come to order. We welcome you folks and we have our last public hearing this morning regarding, oh, I forgot to take the roll for the record. Let's take the roll for the record.
Okay. Commissioner District One Ricky Dobbs is absent. Commissioner District Two Whitney Kenner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner District Three Mark Martin Raxton.
Present.
Commissioner Vice Chair District Four Mark Alcaraz.
Present.
Chairman Phil Miller.
I'm here. Thank you. Again, we have our last public hearing this morning regarding the two thousand and twenty-four millage rate. We will open the public hearing after a brief presentation from our Chief Financial Officer Dominique O'Shea. Yes, sir.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners, County Administrators. I'd like to start this presentation with a recorded tape on millage rate and a digest.
What is the millage rate and how does it impact your wallet? In simple terms, the millage rate is what you owe in property taxes based on the assessed value of your property. Each mil is equivalent to one dollar of every one thousand dollars. As an example, if your property's assessed value is one hundred thousand dollars and you multiply that amount by one mil, the amount you owe in taxes is one hundred dollars. The Douglas County Board of Commissioners is proposing a plan to maintain the current millage rate of twelve point three one three mils, which was rolled back in two thousand and twenty-three. But maintaining that millage rate still equates to a tax increase of one point nine two percent. Why? Because property values have increased. So what will this mean to you in terms of dollars and cents? Based on maintaining the current millage rate, the property tax increase for a home with a fair market value of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is approximately twenty-three dollars more than last year for those without a homestead exemption. And the tax increase for those with that exemption is twenty-two dollars more than last year potentially. So where does your money go? Tax dollars fund general government through judicial system, public safety and public works, health and welfare, parks and recreation, and planning and development. Keep in mind, the school system also assesses a millage rate which is separate from the counties. The good news is there are ways to lower your tax bill, including applying for a homestead exemption to be deducted from the amount you owe. Find out how to qualify for homestead and other exemptions by contacting the Tax Commissioner's Office for detailed information. Meantime, share your input on this year's millage rate by attending any of the upcoming in-person public hearings. We value your voice and look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you. I have a short PowerPoint presentation that augments that verbal you just heard. Give me one second, please. All right, there we go. I'd like to start with a recap of the financial conditions. County has no outstanding debts obligations. County has maintained a fund balance in compliance with the BOC policy, which is in line with best practices. County is embarking on a reinvestment strategy to address the county's aging equipment and infrastructure. County is focused on sustainable economic growth and fiscally prudent development initiatives. You saw this next, this chart in the oral presentation. Basically, it's a summary of the millage rate and budget allocation. And this pie chart illustrates our millage rate as proposed and the schools, that was in the oral as well. And this is the five-year history digest that was advertised. Now, the next chart tells a little story and we kind of made it a little more reader-friendly than it was from the last presentation. What you have here is a comparison of the digest versus the millage rate, historical comparison. As you can see from that line trend, there's been a gradual increase that can be attributed to growth and new construction. However, for most part, you all have maintained either the same millage rate or rolled it back. Millage rate numbers are in red at the bottom of each bar. And that's what this slide here illustrates. I'll just keep it up for a couple more seconds so everybody can have the opportunity to look at it. Okay. Can I proceed? Thank you. And this particular slide just gives us different scenarios based on the current net digest. If we applied fractions of a millage rate against it, what that equates to in dollars. And this is the overall net digest, applying the millage rate that we are retaining, which is the same as last year, compared to what was proposed as a rollback, a net value of one point six million dollars approximately is the difference. And this slide has a scenario of a home with the average value of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. On the left side, if we retain the same millage rate, and on the right side, my right, if we roll back, annual difference on that property, that average assessed value will be twenty-two dollars. And this next slide does the same, except it goes up to a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, which is more in line, I believe, with the average property value in Douglas County. And the difference is thirty-one dollars. And this last slide here is just a reminder today's the last public hearing. And as bear in mind, those slides and scenarios that illustrate the difference between if there's additional rollback or not, doesn't take into consideration appeals or final little bit of exemptions that we just recently concluded the count of it. Thank you very much.
Any questions? I have one. You say it's twenty-three dollars based on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. What is it for seniors who don't pay school tax, do you know?
Not off the top of my head, Chair, but we'll be glad to.
What is, what is school tax? Sixty-one percent, is that right?
That's correct.
Good guess. So seniors would be paying sixty-one percent less than the twenty-three dollars, right?
That's correct, yes.
So it'd be under ten dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will open the public hearing to any citizens wanting to speak regarding the two thousand and twenty-four millage rate. Do we have, oh, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Chairman, we did have some people sign in, and I'll start with those. And then if there's anyone else in the audience, we can welcome them to come speak as well. Before I call you up, I just want to remind you, you'll have three minutes to address the board. Once your three minutes are up, we'll ask you to wrap up your comments. And when you get to the mic, please clearly state your name and address for the record and speak directly into the mic. Our first citizen, Sherry Yurda.
Good morning.
Morning, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Sherry Yurda, I live at two eight eight three Bomar Road. I'm going to try really hard to phrase this as a statement, not a question. There is a T-SPOSS on the November ballot, which has some really incredible-looking projects on it. And the Transportation Department has been holding meetings regarding that. There's another one tonight that I plan to attend because we attended Commissioner Raxton's because we were available that night. And that generated some questions we didn't think of that evening, so we'll see you tonight. What, try not to phrase this as a question. I would like for you guys to speak and take your time with this. If the T-SPOSS does not pass, because there are a lot of citizens in this county who are just fed up with taxes, no more. They don't understand the logic maybe, or they just don't care about the logic of a SPOSS tax, which everyone shares equally. Or equitably maybe would be a more appropriate word. I would like for y'all to speak on what you plan to do to fund those transportation projects. Because the only way I know that you can fund it is either to lower your budget, which there are departments that can't handle any more cuts, or raise taxes more to fund that sixteen point six million dollars a year that the SPOSS is expected to generate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next citizen, Miranda Sharpton.
Hello, good morning. Miranda Sharpton, I live at three one one zero South Sweetwater Road in Lithia Springs. I understand this is a millage rate meeting, but I want to keep on, try to keep on subject. But I was here at the last meeting also, and there was a citizen there was asking where the home values are coming from, like how you're coming up with those, because they have skyrocketed. And along with that, even with the tax exemption, which I didn't even know nothing about until last year. And it wasn't that flyer that was sent out by the Tax Commissioner. It was actually the Women of Douglasville page, because, you know, you find out a lot more on there. But after I even did it, it only took down eighteen dollars a month off our mortgage. That's outrageous. Whenever our mortgage literally, the taxes doubled in twenty twenty-three. And that's where my, that's where my attention got on the taxes. So to go off what that citizen said last year, last week, is where are the home values? How are you guys coming up with them? Because that would be great answers. Because like I said, within two years, my house has doubled in value from what I even paid for it, which is, growth is good. It's excellent, but there are also a lot of apartment buildings coming up. And then there's that studio that's being built. I just really hope that the taxes do kind of come on downfall. Sorry, I'm getting off a little bit of the subject because there's a whole lot going on in my head. But keeping the millage rate the same, I, I'm not in disagreement with. I know you guys do need money for your budget and stuff, but I guess it all comes down to the home values. Or do something better with the tax exemption. Because eighteen dollars a month is a joke. It is a complete joke to have a tax exemption on there. I had to come here three times just to fill up, to do the paperwork, because I turned everything in that they wanted. But then I got an email or a letter in the mail saying that they needed something else, and it was the same thing I already turned in. So all that headache for eighteen dollars a month was just very bizarre. But I just wanted to get that off my chest. And I hope that, like I said, with the home values, I hope there's some answers that come up with how those home values are assessed. And not just because of the growth that we're getting, which is amazing, but for those of us, I bought this house eight years ago. I didn't know anything about tax exemption until literally a year ago. So I just, I hope the people like us that have been there for longer, I hope that like we can actually see a little bit of breathing room for us. So, and with the schools, I know that some of the taxes go to schools. Well, a lot of the schools are having a lot of air conditioning problems. I know of three schools, I don't know them off the top of my head, but I know that my friends' children go to it, and they're always talking about how it is just to have lunch with their kids. It's like extremely stuffy. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Jitwan Osborne. I hope I pronounced that right.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair and administrative staff. So my conversation today is, we talked about it last time, about the investment of the companies that are currently there that could definitely invest back into Lithia Springs and give us a tax break for sure. But I'm just looking at our taxes from two thousand and eighteen at twenty-nine fifty-one to two thousand and twenty-three at five thousand and forty-five dollars. That's an incredible increase.
What was the first number?
Twenty-nine fifty-one to five thousand forty-five dollars and ten cents. And I'll tell you our story. You know, usually we get the tax bill, we just put it in a drawer because it's paid by our, our mortgage company. Well, last year, you guys did a special assessment that we didn't pay attention to. By the time we opened up the envelope, we realized that we owed an additional three hundred plus dollars. And there was an opportunity for it to be a tax lien on our home. And being in the Citizens Academy, I realized that these investors are coming in for these opportunities of us not paying these special assessments that we are not aware of, and they can come in, buy the property, and we lose the property totally for three hundred dollars. My concern in that situation is that we, we were able to cover that. A lot of citizens are not able to cover that. A lot of citizens are not paying attention to these things because they don't want to see another bill. And they see it in the mail and they're just like, oh, my gosh, I can't afford it. So we're looking at the taxes of years of some homeowners, they can't pay it. These investors are the problem in our community. So these tax hikes are causing more issues in our communities because investors are coming in, not paying the four hundred, but paying twenty thousand four hundred. So they know the homeowners can't afford to pay for that, to get their homes back within a year. My other concern is that the plans that are made with these millions of dollars that these companies are bringing to the table is not important and it's not invested in Lithia Springs. So there's that concern as well. So you're saying millions of dollars are coming in, you're showing this banner, they're bringing millions. But we need that tax break too, because they're getting tax breaks for years. Now that it's two thousand and twenty-four, some of those warehouses were built in our area in two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty. They're paying taxes now at a, at a rate, but they're still not investing back into Lithia Springs. On your projected plan for Douglas County, Lithia Springs usually only have one or two projects on there. And it's not million-dollar projects that are invested into the city of Douglasville. If we were to think about the special assessments, we didn't understand how it was assessed. The assessors were not able to provide that information to us in the last meeting. Again, transparency and more information to the community is very important, so we better understand. We want our homes to go up, but we also want a tax break because these billion-dollar companies are getting tax breaks. And how fair is that to us? Not at all. So I know you guys have a plan coming up in the future. The sooner the better.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that would like to speak this morning? Chairman, you can close the public hearing now.
Okay. Just one comment to you, ma'am. According to our county administrator, we did not do a special assessment. Do you know, can you explain that, that three hundred dollars that you were talking about?
Yeah, it was a special assessment. So it raised our taxes. So we just got that probably, I guess it was announced at the beginning of the year, beginning of this year. And we haven't until March or April to pay it.
Is anyone else here familiar with that?
Is it from the school board?
Unless it was from the school board, it was not from us.
I'm not sure, but I'll tell you what.
Please, please, let's talk afterwards and get me the information on it, because nobody here is aware of it, including our county administrator, so.
They can give their money back.
All right. No one else? The public hearing is closed. Are there any questions or comments by the Board of Commissioners?
I, I do have one from the Tax Assessor's Office, because that was a question that we asked last time. I, I asked specifically for the formula that was being used to assess people's property value, and I still haven't gotten a response for that.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We, the Tax Assessor's Office goes by the Department of Revenue Guidelines. We are required to get our sales ratios on properties between ninety percent and a hundred and ten percent. Our target this year was ninety-eight percent, and after which, once we get our sales ratios in that range, we are also required to be uniform across Douglas County. And our uniformity is the coefficient of dispersion, the C O D. And the C O D must be for residential fifteen percent or lower, and for commercial properties, it must be twenty percent or lower. And the P R D, which measures bias, should be ideally one or one hundred percent. These are the three main criterias that we are, that, that are used. After which, the Departments of Audit and Accounts, they look at these, our sales and our ratios. And then they also produce a report, which the, the Board of Assessors may have had that report. So we submitted that our internal ratios were ninety-eight percent. The D O A A audit just came out, and it's showing that our D O A A ratio was ninety-five. So they're saying that we are assessing at a lower level based on their numbers. And so they're saying ninety-five. But the three main criterias for measuring, for getting our numbers are the sales ratio, the C O D, and the P R D. And that's how we value houses in Douglas County.
Thank you.
Mr. Raxton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So one of the things I just want to say is that we are hearing the concerns. We're taxpayers as well, and we have seen our property taxes increase over the years. But we feel very confident and comfortable with what we're looking at for this year. However, one of the things that I am hearing a lot of feedback from is that there is the unknown of tax exemptions that exist. So that's something that we're going to take a look at. And one of the things that I'm going to ensure that I have at my town hall meetings is that we have representation from the Tax Assessor's Office to ensure that our residents in our community is aware of what tax exemptions exist here in Douglas County. So that is a pledge that you're going to get from me, and I will ensure, and we will address and see what we can do to ensure that that communication is pushed out to a larger audience here in Douglas County.
Mr. Chairman, I yield the floor back to you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Alcaraz, Vice Chair Alcaraz.
All right. So to answer some of your questions that you proposed up here in regards to companies coming into Douglas County and not paying their fair share. Yes, the pre, in the past, a lot of companies were allowed to come in and got abatements and incentives to come in, and I agree with you one hundred percent. It, we should, I don't feel like they should have been given abatements so far out to where now, we're just now starting to see them paying some of their the tax revenue that they owe to the county. I personally, and you know, I'm going to push for this, and I hope my colleagues jump in, I'm, I'm done. If you want to come to Douglas County, you want to do business in Douglas County, I agree with you. They should pay a huge share, and we should give them those breaks back to our citizens, because you're being taxed to death. So that's just one of those, yes, I agree with you. With, that's another thing I like to look into is we do have a lot of investors coming in here, buying up a lot of properties and driving the value of the rent income up to a point to where people cannot hardly afford to even rent a home or rent an apartment. So that's another thing that I would like to look into as well. But that, I just wanted to answer that. That was a question that you proposed to us, what we'd like, and I believe also the young lady you were talking about, it lost me now. You propose or you ask us to answer some of those questions of what we look forward in the future, of how we're going to pave these roads and everything in regards to if the T-SPOSS does not pass. Our budget is stretched thin. There's a lot of maintenance that we got to do on a lot of our assets. So it will be a while before we can catch up. We're twenty-five years behind in our resurfacing and our paving. So you're right. The only other way we would be able to do that is to raise taxes, but we don't want to do that. So we can't advocate for. So we can't advocate for it, but I ask, I pray that all the citizens do their due diligence and look into the T-SPOSS, exactly who pays for it. It's paid for by everybody who comes and shops in our county or passes through our county. So the burden is just not on our citizens. So again, I hope everybody looks into that and helps us with this because our roads really need improving. We get all the emails, we hear, we hear the complaints all the time, but when it costs us a million dollars to pave one mile, you've got to think about how many miles we have in this county. And we got 20, we got 35 unpaved roads, and 25 of those are in my district. So all those people who are wanting the roads paved, it's going to be, just in honest, it's going to be sometime before those roads get paved at the cost of inflation right now, how much it costs us to pave a mile. So just wanted to respond back to some of those questions. And I yield back, Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I can't hear you. You can come up if you want.
She's asking the individual.
She's asking the Chief Appraiser.
The Chief Appraiser.
Chief Appraiser.
Steve Balfour.
Our Tax Assessor's Office.
I apologize. I'm Chief Appraiser Steve Balfour, the Tax Assessor's Office.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. We have, oh, we have someone else? You're welcome to come.
The Chairman, the public hearing was closed.
Okay. Well, we're going to reopen the public hearing just for you, okay?
You can reopen it.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Cheryl Maddes, and I'm actually in Commissioner Alcaraz's district. And I just have a question. Last year, I remember Governor Kemp giving us a tax, I don't know if it was a tax deduction or whatever on our home, on our, yes. Yes. And I would like to ask this gentleman a question. Is that something that occurs every year, always, just one time? Okay. I would like to see our county actually present some information or some documents or some type of advertisement saying that this particular tax cut was a one-time thing, and it's not going to go from year to year. Because a lot of my neighbors and me as well, we all thought that we were going to get that tax cut year after year after year from Governor Kemp. So when we got our assessments this time, we were completely thrown off. We, I will, I will present myself as an example. My taxes last year were $1,600, and when I got the assessment this year, it was $3,000. So that was a huge surprise for me and my neighbors as well, and we all were just a bit confused. We didn't know what was going on. We didn't know why that even happened. We just knew we got a tax cut from our taxes last year from Governor Kemp. We thought we was going to get it again this year. So it would really help if the county would just push that information out, going forward, saying, hey, guys, the one that you got in 2023, you're not going to get it in 2024 and beyond or what have you. And if there is another one that's coming from Governor Kemp, let us know that too, so that we can be prepared and aware. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. Okay. The public hearing is closed again. We have a couple of agenda items. Clerk, please begin with our agenda items.
Yes, sir. The first one is a resolution to adopt the Douglas County Board of Education's 2024 millage rate.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the Douglas County Board of Education's 2024 millage rate?
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Are we voting here reluctantly?
Do you have any discussion before the adoption?
Any discussion from the board?
I just have a comment. It would be nice, since we are responsible for adopting this rate, if we could next time have somebody from the school board come in the event that residents have questions, so that they know how this item is being assessed. That would be abundantly helpful.
I agree. Just a reminder to you folks, this is not the Douglas County Board of Commissioners' tax. This is our school tax, which is, if I'm correct, 61%? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. That's correct.
You'll just have to tell us early.
Okay. We're having some technical problems, which I usually do with computers. If you're in favor, raise your right hand. If you're opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay.
Okay. Our next item is a resolution to adopt the Douglas County Board of Commissioners' 2024 millage rate.
Do I have a motion to adopt the Douglas County Board of Commissioners' 2024 millage rate?
I do have a motion, Chairman, but I have been just kind of sitting here thinking over the last several public hearings and the feedback from the residents, and it is, it's weighing heavy on my heart. I don't think in good conscience that I could continue to recommend that we keep the millage rate at the same. And so with that being said, I do think that they need to see some tax relief, no matter how small that may be. And so I would propose that we adopt the millage rate at 12.063, which is a deduction of .25 or a quarter off of the current millage rate.
About $1,007,000, I think. Is that right?
That's correct. It would reduce the amount collected by about $1,700, or $700,000.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve or to adopt the Commissioners' 2024 millage rate with the amendment of cutting it? What was the percentage?
I would, my proposal would be to cut it by a quarter, so .25. So I think that would be 12.063.
Do I have a second?
A second, a motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Matt, Mr. Chair, just some discussion if there is.
Oh, do we have any discussion?
No. Well, I would like to say.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr.
So again, as indicated, as we stated earlier, we are looking at a T-SPOSS. And we are looking to have residents to hopefully support that due to, as the Vice Chairman has said, to the infrastructure improvements that we really need to have here in the county. And we're hoping that the citizens will see this as a good faith effort on the Board of Commission to support doing everything that we can in order to bring up our infrastructure and hopefully a favorable support of the T-SPOSS, but also trying to address this opportunity here related to the millage rate.
Commissioner Raxton, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we can't encourage support or not support of the, of the tax. We can let them know it's out there and to get educated about it, but no support.
So I am requesting support for this particular reduction in the millage rate. And again, we have, and it was brought up, that we have other things that will be also coming forth, but again, in support of this millage rate. And again, hopefully, the residents will see this as a good faith effort of this board to support the concerns that we're hearing.
I yield the floor back to the Chairman.
Anyone else? Okay. Okay, we, did we vote on it?
We have a motion and a second. We're ready to vote.
Yeah.
We'll need a hand vote since we changed the amount.
Okay. All in favor of the Board of Commissioners' 2024 millage rate and cutting it by a quarter of a mil, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Our next item is number three. Resolution to amend the 2023 budget to align with the year-end budget reconciliation. Tiffany Stewart Stanley is here to brief.
Good morning, Chairman, Board of Commissioners, County Administration. So we're coming before you today with our annual reconciliation bill, where we go in and make the necessary amendments to reflect changes in revenue and expenditures for the 2023 budget. We normally do this a little early in the year, but this year, we're coming forth in August to make this reconciliation, to make sure that everything aligns with the intentions of the board. So I'll yield for any questions.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for keeping up with all the changes and modifications. I don't know how y'all do it.
Who's on first? All right. Do I have a motion to amend the 2023 budget to align with the year-end budget reconciliation?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We voting by hand?
We'll try electronic.
Not working.
Not working. Okay. Motion carries 4-0.
Okay. Next.
Our last item is a resolution to amend the 2024 budget for additional revenue and budget modifications. Tiffany Stewart Stanley.
Thank you. So we are also coming to ask to amend the 2024 budget to, for the additional revenues that have been received for this year. We've received some additional revenues. But also, I will highlight, there are a couple of additional things that we will be doing. One of them is a COLA, 5% COLA for retirees. And another thing is just some additional software that we needed in order for the county to continue to run in the way that we need to. And so that's about $428,000 for that additional software. So we're coming to ask the board to once again amend the budget so that everything lines up for the 2024 budget, so we can go into the 2025 budget process with everything aligned.
Okay. Questions or comment?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to amend the 2024 budget for additional revenue and budget modifications?
So move. Second.
Motion and second. Any questions, comments? All in favor? I did mean to do that.
Motion carries 3-1.
Well, 3-0, right? I didn't, I abstained.
Oh, you abstained, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Motion carries 3-0.
I abstained because I'm a retiree of Douglas County. I don't think it's fair for me to vote me a raise, so. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
All in favor, say.